This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 2nd, 2025. The meeting is available by telephone meetings as well. We have an agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Pam, in motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mark, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The vote? Motion passed. Through the minutes of the November 3 meeting is claimed. Any corrections needed? Jim made a motion, is there a second? Uh, second. Any further discussion? For full time.
Aye.
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 My name's Amanda.
Morning. Um, I don't have any recording today. I'll be gone next week. Um, and, um... Um, thought I was checking the L S question and stuff. We're right there leaving, uh... I'm trying to get my phone number. I don't know. I think I'll be... We're leaving... We're leaving far away. And we'll be back after this. We'll be back after this.
I actually do have a question. I'm wondering if we might be able to consider some sort of an energy audit for that facility over there, the sixteen hundred, eighteen hundred, two thousand a month? You know, it just seems like a large utility bill. I realize it also entails phone and internet on that standpoint. But I'm just wondering, is that something that we should can consider? Because that seems like a pretty good chunk for as new of a facility.
Those bills are actually massive. In fact, year or two, three years. Yeah, absolutely.
I just, you know, sixteen hundred to two thousand a month for one building when you compare it to other buildings that we're doing. I'm just wondering if we've got an area where something needs to be insulated or re-insulated?
Yeah, I think...
Just an important...
Contact area. I mean, is that a form? Or say...
Well, so, yeah. Might be worth us asking the question, if they do those kinds of audits, just to walk through, even if they could possibly say, well, this might be one of your issues. It just seems like a pretty large...
What about today? I'll let you move on from that.
Yeah.
Is there part of the agenda?
I've got one, maybe for the attorney and the sheriff and the engineer. I got three calls this week on B on the road, mud and winter. And it was one thing around the farming community, and it's one thing that just come out of the field was mud. I don't know, they keep going back and forth, back and forth. What do you think? That been my answer for an ag community, you know? Especially the price itself, the operation of the farm. There's nothing I can do. And you think the person doing it would have some consideration later on themselves at the end of the day? And it's going to start freezing and small cars, different ones, chunks.
I don't think... I don't think it's littering. I mean, it would be if I were, for example, go out and take garden bags that were stepping on the road, trying to some of these driveways, see a paint and add. Then I'd argue that's littering and that's okay. I might question if littering is coming back to just being me. But I assume what we're talking about here is not that kind of violation. Um, I agree with the sheriff, I mean... We can do a... I mean, I think it's probably just kind of normal, isn't it?
It is more than that.
We can do a public service and, you know, try and press it that way, but these guys can get to work. I mean, you know, without me in it. That's... And if there's mass that, we'll certainly investigate that. If... If you're viewing on what's on the road that contributes to the crash, the insurance company can take it from there. You know, I just want to have the equipment in clean room. Right, that's one thing. It's not violation of law. I, you know, that...
I know it's against law to put snow on the other road. You have that problem. I wonder if the throws that... I just didn't know what I should tell these people.
I don't know either. They don't like that answer. For next day. Be part of the process. I'll bring it up. Yeah. Yeah.
Any other department? Any in here? Not quite eight, four, five, everything? Let me skip down to the minute? Ten, ten? Number ten. The Treasury's report for October and...
We should go to eleven, usually Shannon comes down.
I know, I was like, I was the same, but I'm just gonna... We can go to recorder's report for October number... Yeah, number eleven. Looks like we have the full amount. Seven thousand, five hundred, forty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. Is there a motion to approve recorder's report? Todd made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Pam, second. Any further discussion? Roll call Jim.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Number twelve, discussion of possible action on temporary moratorium on utility scale solar energy conversion systems. Do you want? I want to. Yes. There will be any questions for me, but step on up to the plate, I guess. Did you put this on or you didn't?
With Aaron in regards to this, and we just said, put Aaron for another thing.
Okay. All right.
Give up that solar moratorium?
Yeah. Do you want to talk about it?
You have it, right?
Yep.
Yep.
I necessarily have. Um, have questions, don't let me know. Now, what I did do, um, was I researched some other county in Iowa, and I think a lot of states, to kind of see what they had done. Um, and I did my own work on it. Sometimes others have gone before you and maybe have stuff figured out. So I think that'll work. I think it meets the need, um, and, um, I think it's pretty outside party for reading it. I don't think they think, wow, this is way great. Oh, we have to... Insistent, so, um, if you have questions, don't know. If it's something that needs to be came, happy to do it. I will claim to be an expert on, uh, solar energy.
Pam, do you want to add anything?
Sure. So this would be resolution thirteen twenty-six, twenty-five. Temporary moratorium on utility scale solar energy conversion systems. Whereas utility scale solar energy conversation conversion, I mean, systems. I'll have to correct that spelling. Means an electrical generating facility comprised of one or more solar arrays with the ability of producing one megawatt of electricity and accessory facilities, including but not limited to power lines, transformers, and substations that operate by converting the energy of sun into electrical power, which may be used outside or distributed into the electrical grid. And whereas concerns have been raised by public officials regarding the county's level of preparedness when it comes to the development of utility scale solar energy conversion projects with the county due to not having a current utility scale solar energy conversion ordinance. And whereas the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors wishes to enact a moratorium on the development and construction of utility scale solar energy conversion systems and issuing application or permits relating to such development and construction of utility scale solar energy conversion systems for the term of nine months, which may be extended upon resolution of the Board of Supervisors to allow the Board of Supervisors to adopt an ordinance that balances the rights of property owners seeking to have utility scale solar energy conversion system on their property and be mindful of the health and safety of others. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Mitchell County, Iowa, then a moratorium on the development and construction of utility scale solar energy conversion systems. And the application for permits relating to such development and construction of the utility scale solar energy conversion systems is approved for a period of nine months, at which time the moratorium could be extended by resolution if deemed necessary by the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors. And be it further resolved that the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors reserves the right to end the moratorium prior to the approved term of the moratorium upon completion of a satisfactorily developed utility scale solar ordinance. And be it further resolved that the moratorium approved by this resolution shall become effective immediately upon the adoption of this resolution, approved and adopted by the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors, and that would be if it's... I just, we have a couple of spelling corrections that will need to be...
I like to get as many where I'd be it resolved in response.
You did good.
That was great. It was great. Well, we have resolution number fifteen twenty-six dash twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve a temporary moratorium on utility scale solar energy conversions?
Approve thirteen twenty-six dash twenty-five.
Jim made a motion, is there a second? Uh, second. Any further discussion?
Can you, um, let us know, Amanda, where they're at, the planning and zoning folks, on their work on this? Because I know they're...
Yeah, I'll keep you guys informed in the process. Um, it was sent to John and it's still in the construction process. He will be for a while until, until that gets... I mean, I'm still... But I'll let you guys know when I have something. I'll keep you guys informed.
And this has no effect, Erin, on the, any solar, uh, facilities that have already been put in place, correct?
That's...
Just want to make sure that was probably known.
Roll call Todd. Uh, Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sydney. Aye. Jim. Motion passes. Thank you. It is eight forty-five. I will open the public hearing on proposed internal loans to fund urban renewal projects cost. Any oral or public comments received to the Board of Supervisors? Jim?
I have none.
I have... Pam?
Um, I had some questions about amounts.
I have more people.
Yeah? No, I'm... All right. Any received at the, um, honor's office?
None.
Discussion amongst the board members? Any discussion?
Just only discussed in the past, I guess. Nothing more to add.
Comments from the public? Anyone would like to come up and speak? Paul? I see you. You should raise your hand.
Not today.
Sydney?
Um, I think it's a good idea that you are moving forward on some of these projects, um, today. That's putting a good use to the tip money release type thing.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I would just state that, um, when you take the difference in the interest gained versus the interest lost, it'll be about a percent difference maybe. And it may have been a more financially prudent way when you consider the administrative fees to take this out of local option sales tax. That's my opinion only. I am in support of, um, contribution to the historical society. The amount of seven seventy is a little stout, but that's all I have.
Any other public comments? I don't see any online. Will be raising your hand. Okay. I will close the public hearing at eight forty-eight. Okay. We'll move on to number nine, resolution authorizing internal loan to fund urban renewal projects cost. And this resolution will be thirteen twenty-seven. Thirteen twenty-seven dash twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve resolution thirteen twenty-seven dash twenty-five?
We have number eight or number nine?
Number eight.
Okay.
Resolution authorizing internal loan to fund urban renewal projects cost. And the resolution is thirteen twenty-seven dash twenty-five. I would move to make that one. Todd made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Jim, second. Any further discussion? Roll call Mark.
No.
Pam.
Aye.
Sydney? Aye. Jim?
Aye.
Todd? Motion passes. We'll move on to number nine, resolution authorizing economic development grant agreement with Mitchell County Historical Society. And that resolution will be thirteen dash, or thirteen twenty-eight dash twenty-five. Do you all have that? No? It's right here? Thirteen twenty-eight dash twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve resolution number thirteen twenty-eight dash twenty-five?
Move to approve thirteen twenty-eight dash twenty-five.
Jim made a motion, is there a second? I'm shaking. Todd, second. Any further discussion? Roll call Pam.
Aye.
Sydney? Aye. Jim?
Aye.
Todd? All right, Mark? Motion passes. We can clap. All right, moving back to this Treasury report. Shannon is down here. Good morning. Morning. How are you?
Great.
Good.
Our second Monday. Okay, so the treasurer's report is for September. Um, motor vehicles paid to state was one hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine thirty-eight, seventy-six. Motor vehicle fees to general basic was eleven thousand, nine forty-one, eighty-four. Postage reimbursed for the county was eight hundred fifty, and driver's license fees to the county was one thousand, five hundred and nineteen. We issued two hundred seventeen driver's licenses last month. Of those thirteen were not coming just into taxpayers', which is higher than we've been doing. Yeah. An extra ten dollars, not a lot, but it doesn't seem to deter any, if they want to get it done. We do have a kid coming up from way earlier waterways. I told them about it, but they're wanting to, especially wanting to travel up there. Right. And I know Clay County's really full, we aren't getting a lot of over, from Clay County because they check us off. We give you same hours. Um, new registration page state was one hundred fifty-two thousand, five eighty-seven, fifty-six. And of that, um, the percentage we got was two thousand, seventy dollars and five cents. So a total of motor vehicle driver's license collections was three hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred seventy, thirty-three. Of that, the county retained sixteen thousand, five hundred, ten dollars, eighty-nine cents. Product taxes collected, nine hundred seventy thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. And then we got five thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars for penalties. They got some very, some upset people because as I said, the postmark gets applied down in waterway now, not in the local office. Not arguing with them right now. Change of policy there, so people have to be a little bit more timely on the turning in the payments. Special assessments collected was seven thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. We had one person, if they sell a house, um, they have to pay off their special assessment. First couple houses that were sold, that was the bigger amount for that. Tax sales certificates redeemed, there was seven of them, and that was eight thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars even. And prepaid taxes or features with those mathematical errors are, we, like I said, we send out a statement in October of what is due in November, because I like to give them a little bit of heads up. By law, we have to tell them November first to come out due. So there was two months of penalties on that, on the billing statement. If people just sent it back in, we give them credit towards their features if they pay first and second. We don't leave that money, we put it towards, we have the extra money. Interest on investments was seventy-two thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. And then we processed fifty-seven miscellaneous receipts for our department and other departments for one million, one hundred, one thousand, six hundred sixty-nine dollars, eighty-nine cents. So total revenue process was two million, five hundred thirty-five, seven hundred seventy dollars and forty-two cents. I think we will have more taxes paid just because all the tax certificates we have out right now. By law, um, the tax certificate holders, the homeowner has forty-five days to pay their tax. They have to be forty-five days delinquent. And then all those tax certificate holders can pay a subsequent, which means they pay the September amount due and it gets put on the tax certificate, and then they start earning two percent interest on that as well, so... And that would be at the end of this week. So I see, probably next week, a lot of taxes blacked. We are at ninety-nine point one percent of taxes. One hundred thirty thousand still help. That's pretty much, yes, thanks.
Good. Good job, Amanda.
Great job on the miscellaneous, uh, or the interest investments as well. Thank you for your work on those.
It's fun. We did, we did put money in IP last month in that. Business is quite as high as home trust, but home trust has a cap of how much they can have that we could put in there. Plus, they have to put collateral by law for all public funds. And Jean and I are really close together as far as when she's getting to the point where she is not comfortable putting that much collateral. So we met our limit of deposits and then, um, so then we put more money over IP because I had all my equity in the first season as well. So that worked out really good to start doing that. Pretty seamless. In DCH, the next day the money's in home trust. So I put, um, majority of it back from IP, back in the home trust because we set out the treasury orders. But I also have to be careful with that because as Jean and I talked, our treasurer's orders go out, but they don't go out of the county. They don't go out of the trust. They might just go into like the school of accounts, the city's account. So, um, we're gonna email a lot back and forth and give the heads up on what's happening. They don't want to really have any issue.
On the county's behalf, we appreciate your efforts there. We know.
I pay those breaks as far as their industry.
I know. Yeah, that's why historically I...
That's awesome.
You know, they are higher than for citizens right now. The home trust is higher than both of them, but, um, so it's a nice catch-all to just put money over. There are some accounts that I'm going to probably talk with some departments about. They have accounts that are not as high as our checking and saving, the county ones. There are other accounts that have like seven, they're twenty some accounts. And some of them get pretty low interest rates, so, and have high balances. So if I can talk to like emergency management, B nine one one. Chris isn't comfortable with CDs and six-month investment timeframe or whatever. But IP, I can put it down there and pull it right back the next day if you need it. So if he's got sizable balance, I could maybe make some money. I'm looking into that, see if I can make separate accounts down there. It just goes back into their funds, but it's, I feel like I have to. Looking at avenues and if we have money on the table, creating that.
Is there a motion to approve treasurer's report for options?
I move to approve the treasurer's report, two billion, five hundred thirty-five thousand, seven seventy-two and forty-two cents.
Pam, in motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mark? Any further discussion? Roll call Sydney. Aye. Jim?
Aye.
Todd? Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Another thing, um, we did get the report from ISAC and we did get our five percent. Thank you for everybody that turned in the big work. It's always a man's scramble the last couple of weeks, but we did get the five percent. Um, we'll get, you'll get your money for your, um, physicals from that accident policy directly with the V H R. Probably at the middle of, no, usually it's the end of November, middle of December, depending on when they process them. Um, we'll get money from ISAC for all the assessments that were done and the steps that people took. And we'll get that figured out. Usually try to do separate checks so Lindsay doesn't have to co-mangle with the payroll check. And I want me to get the check from them. We'll get that figured out. Thank you. You're welcome.
I think we're down to number fifteen. That's public hearing for fiscal year twenty-six budget amendment. And looks like we have a date of December second, twenty twenty-five, at nine AM. All right, is there a motion? Thank you, Todd. Todd made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mark, second. Any further discussion?
Let's see, I didn't get my line with someone else.
December second, we, at nine AM. Roll call Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Sydney? Aye. Jim? Or Todd? Motion passes. Designate official county newspaper. Um, so, which kind of press news is done? They have the Osage Oracle, so it would be, they'd be our second newspaper. EJ's first, when needed, and open to the remainder of the year. Yeah.
Have you talked in regards to time to get stuff in?
Yep, so...
Better than what it was before?
Um, Tuesday, it's still the same deadline, the Tuesday, but it's for Friday instead of for the following Tuesday. The Tuesday might be that week of Friday. Lot better than what we did. All right. All right, do you want to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. Mark?
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Pam, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Pam?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Number fifteen, Discussion on Possible Action on ISACs. I can't even say that correctly.
Amicus curious.
Amicus curious. Yeah, there you go. I put this on the agenda. There was a lot of confusion last week. I believe Rachel, you were going to put a resolution together?
Yes.
And you have that, right?
Yes.
I must have not printed it off.
Um, so, you know.
Yep. Contribution agreement made between the county board of supervisors and ISAC is effective as of November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas ISAC has requested five hundred dollars in funding from the county board of supervisors. This funding request will be used to help cover the cost of the Amicus brief, which has a total cost of twenty-five thousand dollars. Now therefore, be resolved, the county board of supervisors will contribute five hundred dollars to ISAC. The foregoing resolution was adopted by the county board of supervisors in Mitchell County, Iowa, on November twelfth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Put it up back on here because, um, last week, there was a lot of confusion on my part. As well as not the appropriate paperwork put together. We didn't have a resolution. We, um, I feel like if we're going to do something like that, we should have all the appropriate paperwork to, to pass it. Um, I have had a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls. A lot of people telling me that I, I work for the Mitchell County people and that I need to do what they tell me to do. That's kind of what I've gotten, um, through emails, so.
Might comment on that.
You mean, you sure can. That's just what I've gotten.
No, I understand that, so, just what you said there. There's, there's twenty or thirty individuals that have really pushed for this, and that's totally fine to do that. But we work for over ten thousand people in this county. So when, when a small amount of people tell you what you need to do, or anything you need to do, represent about ten thousand people. Not just a small amount that are actually voicing their concerns. And their concerns are legitimate, not, not downplaying that at all, but. I want to comment.
I know. So.
The only comment that I have is I appreciate, um, this, um, being reconsidered by the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors. And, um, as supervisors, let me make it known that we all get a lot of, of information from a lot of different sources. And, and sometimes it can be overwhelming, so there certainly is, is, um, no blame to be laid anywhere if we need to take additional time to, to review something. So I appreciate that. And I'm in support of it because, um, um, this is on behalf of the ISAC membership, which is statewide. And it was submitted to every one of the ninety-nine counties of Iowa. And it makes the argument that highlights the importance of local control.
This would be Resolution thirteen twenty-nine dash twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Yeah, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Cindy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Todd? Aye. Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Motion passes. Meetings attended.
At the NACOG meeting. Right. Um, financials, uh, they're considering a, uh, updating the drug and alcohol policies for the transit bus systems. Everybody's related to that. And also considering something that we've had is the vacation policy in regard to, uh, transferring vacation hours to an individual that is running a company or everything. To really adopt something like that. Two short meetings. That's all I have.
I have none.
I had no meetings, outside meetings this week.
I had no meetings this week either.
Okay, uh. I had an FMC ECI, um, meeting with, uh, basically the legislature, the board, um, on our putting districts together to make regions. There was a lot on the agenda, but there was a lot of time spent on this. And unfortunately, there was some that were there that had no idea what the districts were going around the state. Who they caught us off guard, um, thought we were going with what they were wanting us to, go into these regions. So, all the work that they did and the letter of intent we sent down, which was asked by these people that we sent this letter of intent by this meeting. So there was a lot of confusion. They made no decision. They tabled it. They're adding another meeting in December to look at it again. So, it's, just FYI for any of you of the committees that are dealing with that, it's going to be a long process. And I know Mark is one, sure. Yeah, it, sitting at that meeting, it was like question after question to this man at Winslow, who is our representative. Like, well, who told you to do that? It was kind of, it was a little bit embarrassing. So, anyway, I also had a fair board meeting. Um, it was quick. We had some contracts, the tractor truck ball, um, is going to be a new pulling organization. I mean, they're out there on the circuit. Uh, we're, yeah, that'll start a half hour earlier. Hopefully, they wanted to start, so who made the decision probably should be. Um, sounds like four-H animals aren't going to slow up anytime soon. So that new building, um, there's room for quite a few more pens. So, that committee is looking to see how mu, how many more pens we need and, and get them ordered. They may even have to, um, which this was a suggestion, I guess. The show arena might, might make it a little smaller because it's, the animals are normally trained in a smaller arena. They're home or whatever, so that would make room for a few more pens. And they want to get some new lighting. And, uh, the rep for these fans, uh, we're going to have them come down. Because they, they should be moving air better than what they are now. Something's not quite right, so they're going to have some guy from Minneapolis where they came from. That was a few other complaints about the movement of the air, so. That was it.
Thank you. Winner management plan, um, Sugar Site, thirty-three fifty-one, four hundred forty, Street Raceville. And Mosher Ridge, thirty-two twenty-two, four hundred, Street Raceville. Thank you, Rachel. Public comments?
I just wanted to thank you for your hard work. It's not easy doing your job. When people do speak up, there's always a whole bunch of people who don't say anything, you know? There's, I know there's the ones that speak up, but maybe agree. And, um, I think it, I'm, I'm glad that you decided to contribute to ISAC for this suit of our own local control. I think it's pretty important to, um, thank you for that. And thank you for, um, funding the historical society. I work there with the news. We all need a place to put our old family's stuff that our kids are working on. You know, it is historically significant.
Colleen?
Um, I, I want to echo. Thank you very much for bringing ISAC in this brief back on the agenda. Donate that five hundred dollars because it is very important that we should be able to, oh, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to thank you for helping the museum too. I'm hoping that we can give the museum something in the county that will tell our history and that will bring more people into our community and help our community go also. Thank you.
I just wanted to, uh, thank you also, but we have our annual meeting coming this Sunday at two o'clock. I don't know if you, any of you are interested in attending. We put it on Facebook and I've, and nailed out some letters too. But we're going to have an update on kind of where we've come, where we're going, and it should be. That'll be held at the Conservation Building, and then roll call for the museum.
Have one online? Lisa?
Yes, I just wanted to thank, I just wanted to thank you all as well for supporting local control today and that, um, it, it's extremely important.
Thank you, Lisa.
Anyone else in the public chairs?
I just want to say I'm excited for the Historical Society to, uh, kick off those programs with our youth.
Okay.
That'll be great.
Wonderful. Looks like we have number seventeen, Canvas, the vote from the November third, twenty twenty-five, city and school election. And this is going to be by resolution this time. And Resolution number thirteen thirty dash twenty-five. I'll read it. Thank you. It'll be much shorter, but it'll be a little bit. Um, certification, Canvas of Mitchell County election results, city school election. Whereas the city school election was held as prescribed by law on November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the Board of Supervisors and ex officio Board of, Board of canvassers has canvased votes of that election in accordance with Iowa Code fifty point twenty-four. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the undersigned member of the Board of Supervisors and ex officio Board of canvassers of Mitchell County, Iowa, you hereby certify the following turnout report and results in the city school election held November fourth, twenty twenty-five. And that no obvious clerical errors were identified during the canvass. Six hundred eight people voted at the polls on election day. Seventy-six absentee ballots were accepted for counting. One provisional ballot was accepted for counting. Um, a total of six hundred eighty-five people voted. All races are for a term of four years unless otherwise noted. Candidates elected by the voters of the respective cities locally wholly within Mitchell County. Carpenter Mayor, two-year term, Tom Rolfs. Carpenter Council, two-year term, five to be elected, Julie Rolfs. Kelsey Bundy, Patricia Anderson, Casey Petznick was a write-in winner. Tim Johnson, write-in winner. Mitchell Mayor, Steve Strawshine. Mitchell Council, David Altic, Russ Weaverling, Pat Hips. McIntyre Mayor, two-year term, Mark Kramer, write-in winner. McIntyre Council, two-year term, five to be elected, Rick Deery, write-in winner. Barry Johnson, write-in winner. Jared Stevenson, write-in winner. Jake Miller, write-in winner. And Jesse Eastman, write-in winner. Orchard Council, two to be elected, Lauren Wagner and Julie Edwards, write-in winner. Osage Council at Large, Bill Hewitt. Osage Council Ward Two, Brian Bangmeyer. Osage Council Ward Four, Larry Mark. Osage Park Board Commissioner, six-year term, Mitchell Wiggern, write-in winner. City Esker Mayor, two-year term, Keith Horgan. City Esker Council, two to be elected, Michael Jewell Benwak. City Esker Council to fill vacancy, one to be elected, Herb Wright. Staceyville Mayor, Paul Albeck. Staceyville Council, two to be elected, Alex Emerson and Lauren Sampson. Uh, votes cast for candidates in Central Springs Community School District, Raceville Community School District, Red Rockford, Marble Rock Community School District, Northeast Iowa Community College, and North Iowa Area Community College are certified to Work County, Howard County, Floyd County, Dubuque County, and Sarah Gordo County respectively. So we, this is a motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Resolution thirteen thirty dash twenty-five?
I move to approve Resolution thirteen thirty dash twenty-five, certification of the election results.
Jim made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jim, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Jim?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Motion passes. I believe we can, uh, we're in the meeting at nine fifteen.